Okay. I'd like to follow the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council.
And Bellflower Finance Authority Monday, September 24, 2018, to order at 7 o'clock for open session. Let it be known that we've reconvened for open session. And there was no reportable action in our closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santenaz.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Snoblegger.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Okay, can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Ron Snoblegger? And the pledge allegiance by our Public Safety Director Joel Hockman.
If you'd all please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've given us. We thank you for all the joy and happiness you bring us. We thank you for all the great things that you've done for me and and my family and I hope you keep it up. Thank you.
Amen. Please face the flag and join me in saying, I
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, City Council announcements. Excuse me. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be held Tuesday, October 9th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. The annual event is put on by the Kingdom Causes of Bellflower and the Bellflower Ministerial Association. Come out and enjoy the delicious breakfast and begin the day at the Bellflower's newest event sender, Center, The Main. Located at 16400 Bellflower Boulevard. Tickets are $20 per person, which does include breakfast and are on sale now. To purchase with a check or cash in advance, call 805-62-804-2189. Or to purchase your tickets online, you can visit www.2018bellflowermpv for Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at EventBrite.com. And with that, Mayor Protem Sunny Santenaz.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Paramount Joint Active Transportation Plan will guide the design of safe, enjoyable, and convenient walking and biking options to schools, parks, and other places you would like to go to. We ask you to please take our online survey and please share your thoughts on the future of Bellflower Paramount. Visit the following link. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Councilmember Juan Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The November 6, 2018, general municipal election has been canceled due to no more city council candidates than offices to be elected. The three qualified candidates nominated by the close of the nomination period on August 10th were Ron Snoblegger in District 1, Sunny Santenaz in District 3, and Ray Dutton in District 5. The appointments of the nominated candidates have been confirmed and the general municipal election has been canceled. However, and this is important, Bellflower voters will still have local school board races, county measures, and federal races to vote on at the November 6, 2018, general election that's conducted by the Los Angeles County Registry Recorder, County Clerk. For more information, please visit www.lavote.net for more information regarding these measures. If you have any questions about the November election, please contact the City Clerk's Office at area code 562-804-1424, extension 2271. Or by email at cclerk@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower City Council meetings airing on Charter Spectrum Channel 36 have temporarily changed from Tuesday evening at 7 o'clock to Wednesday evening at 7 o'clock due to broadcast equipment upgrades. The Thursday airing at 11 a.m. and the Saturday airing at 11 a.m. will not be impacted. All City Council meetings are also available 24/7 on the City of Bellflower's YouTube channel. To view our meetings, visit www.youtube.com/user/CityOfBellflower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Ron Snoblegger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Noon Lions Club and the City of Bellflower will co-host this year's annual Boulevard Car Show on Saturday, September 29th, from 2:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Snoblegger. All right. We have a presentation by our Parks and Recreation Department on a lead program, and then we're going to follow that with the National Hispanic Heritage Month. And to my colleagues, soon as the presentation is done with Parks and Rec, then we can all meet on the on the platform down here. Okay? Take it away, PJ.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. It's my honor this evening to present to you an overview of our first time offering our lead program, our Leadership Experience and Development Program for our youth in the community. And we'll also be recognizing them with some certificates at the conclusion of the presentation. So what is the lead program? It was a free volunteer six-week job training program. It gave an opportunity to youth to gain experience within our Parks and Recreation Department. It, we were able to teach them basic job skills, communication skills, life skills that will help them succeed. Who participated? We had one staff member who coordinated this whole thing, and I do want to recognize her, Angelica Seaver. She did an amazing job with this, so Angelica, can you put your hand up for City Council so they know who you are? She created this entire program and ran it from start to finish on her own. We had 26 participants that completed and submitted applications before the deadline. All the applicants participated in group interviews. And 17 of those applicants between the ages of 13 and 17 were selected based on their performance in the interviews and how their application how their application was. The lead teens were scheduled for shifts at Carruthers Park, Thompson Park, and Sims Park. And of those parks, we had 445 total hours of labor that was put into those parks and job training, specifically on the on the job training. In addition, they volunteered at special events for another 318 hours. The lead teen teens gained experience while shadowing current recreation leaders during their park shifts and during the special event shifts. All of the hours were logged and approved by the park supervisors. And the teens received end-of-program evaluations based on feedback from the park supervisors. We also, this was a really neat component to the program that Angelica developed is we had some exposure to different career fields, not just Parks and Recreation. And we were able to take some field trips and have some guest speakers come into the training classes. And one of the, our, the main field trip was to WeWork in Long Beach, and it's a collaborative. Basically, they rent their facilities out to up-and-coming and startup companies that are in the fields of new technologies, innovative companies, different things like that. And these kids were all exposed to CEOs and leaders in the tech world, website development. As you can see here, there's quite a list that they were able to be exposed and ask questions to different CEOs and different type of different career fields. So that was a really neat experience. In addition to the WeWork excursion, we had seven additional guest speakers that came in throughout the period in areas such as education, physical training. We had different entrepreneurs, those that were in the medical field and law fields as well. The main benefits to the lead program, it developed the lead teen sense of responsibility, their communication and self-awareness, both in their personal and professional lives. It provided volunteer workforce to supplement our staffing levels during the summer in the Parks and Recreation Department. And it strengthens and educates the youth within the community to become future leaders. In addition to all the on-the-job training, in-the-field training, the students combined for a total of 298 classroom hours, learning different skills, how to apply those skills. They interacted with members of the community as well as current Parks and Recreation staff. The teens gained firsthand experience in what a daily shift involves for recreation leaders at our parks. Park shifts and special assignments taught the lead teens how to become organized, responsible, and resourceful. And a almost unintended result of this is that this program really improved and strengthened the leadership qualities within our current staff as they were able to lead and train these staff, and that was a really positive benefit of the program. And I've got a short, one-minute video here to show you.
If you're thinking about applying to the lead program, you must be willing to get out of your comfort zone and learn.
And socialize with others.
And be around people from different backgrounds.
And be creative.
And that concludes this presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments from the City Council. And I do just want to congratulate all of these young people there. They did a fantastic job for us at all of our events. They've, they're all respectful. They all dressed really nice tonight, and they, they look good. We really enjoyed this program, and Angelica did a fantastic job, and all of these kids did a great job. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments you may have.
Great presentation. So, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Comments and questions? Thank you so much for the presentation. It was well put together, and I appreciate Parks and Rec putting out this program, and also, thank you, Angelica, for leading this program. Just one quick question. Who qualifies for this program? Do they have to go to school in Bellflower? Do they have to live in Bellflower? Do they have to work in Bellflower? How can somebody get into the program?
I believe all, most of our kids were from Bellflower this year, if not all of them.
Yeah. They're maybe from high schools, there's Lakewood.
Microphone. Just right there.
So, for the requirements, it doesn't have to be a certain high school in Bellflower. So it could be, we have a couple from Lakewood and Mayfair, but all of them, the rest of them go to Bellflower High School. So, and it's teens ages 13 to 17.
So they could be going to St. John Bosco, so they qualify.
Right, yeah. Didn't want to restrict it just to Bellflower.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And this was our first year offering it, so the restrictions weren't, there weren't great restrictions on it. We wanted to see what our turnout was for applications, and we were actually quite pleased that we got so many applications that we only accepted the best of the best. And that's the kids that are here this evening.
Second question is, how was this promoted to the students?
How was it promoted?
Yeah.
Through social media, through City of Bellflower.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, and then I contacted just counselors from local high schools, just career centers or counselors to kind of spread the word. Other than that, it was posted, it was also in the brochures as well.
Wonderful. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
PJ, so after they conclude this, are they then one of those that you would like to have apply for a permanent position as a recreation leader?
Yes, absolutely, and, and that was one of the reasons we developed this. One, we know we're going to be reducing staff over the next few years with the major hikes with minimum wage. Two was the applicants we have been getting probably for the past five years have not been up to par. So our pull to pull from hasn't been great. So we wanted to get them in and train them. And once they're eligible to hire for age, so a 13-year-old would need to wait till, until they're 16. But what we do now is, as soon as this program's over, we open up a hiring period for us. So not only our summer one, but we do one in the fall now. And several of these young people were eligible and have applied, and we're going through that process now. So that is the plan, that hopefully we can get them on, and they're trained, and they're trained the right way, and can start working for us.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Garza.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I just wanted to thank staff, first of all, for taking the lead on this. No pen intended. But I, I can't, can't begin to tell you, when I was their age, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't have an opportunity like this to be exposed to a program like this myself. I'm blessed, and I'm lucky that I had some good mentors in my life that allowed me to be in the path that I'm in right now, and hopefully in a better path. But because of my experience, I think the opportunity you've been given is a really good one. So to see you participating in it and to see our staff and our city providing this opportunity, I think it's fantastic. I think we as a city, we, we invest in a lot of things. We invest in our infrastructure, we invest in, in our economic development, in our public safety. But I think that the fabric that brings all of this together is our people. Right? So investing in our youth is key. So, again, I want to commend you for participating. I hope you found it to be enriching. And I really want, again, want to thank staff for, for all you've done with this. And if you continue with it, I'm looking forward to seeing more success from this. So, again, thank you for everything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So we good, guys?
Yep.
All right, let's go up to the platform there and award these kids.
Uh huh.
You have both your feet up?
No. I'll just sit right here.
You want to stay right here?
Yeah.
I'd like to also call Angelica. Seaver's up here? See yours? Stay up here, guys, because I'm going to call your name here. Jaden Simpson? Who's Jaden Simpson? Right here. We have a certificate of completion for you. Jeremiah Simpsons? You must be brothers. And then we got, Aya Lee? Aya Lee. Aya? And then we have Angel Barbosa. And Dexter Quintanilla. And we have Stephanie Reyes. And then Wisdom Holland. And Wendy Lobos. And Jasmine Kahili. Khalil. And we have Sister Juliana. Kahelia. My tongue, this doesn't work that way. I apologize. And I apologize to any other names I didn't get. And I know most of you are from Bellflower, and I graduated from Bellflower, too. Okay, it's picture time. If there's any other parents out there that want to come up, we have time, so feel free. If you want to get up on the other side of this wall, you're welcome.
There you go. All right, much better.
All right, thank you.
Okay, everybody? We've got a proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month to be accepted by Pedro Travesio in Curitiba, Milan. Milan. I want to try.
You get the name.
A year. Come on up. From the Ninos Latinos, you need it. Who needs no needles? Yeah, no, yeah. You have a hard time, too, huh? Yeah. How you doing, Orey? The founders? Listen, I'm going to say something about this. This is a local, private, nonprofit organization that recruits and trains English, Spanish, bilingual-speaking resources for parents and places for foster children. They are also licensed to provide adoption services and is currently assisting in the adoptions of children and placement in Los Angeles, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Orange Counties. I like that, NLU. How you say it? Niños, Latin, Niños Latinos? Works to ensure and maintain the partnership with the county and state government entities and surrounding communities that every foster child and non-minor dependent placed within our agency grows up safe, physically and emotionally healthy, and lives a stable, in a stable home. And that's what this group does, and, and I think it's a great cause, and, and all this work you do, you get a little recognition tonight, this is your time. And would somebody like to say something? Before I give, I'm going to quote. With that, we got the proclamation here for proclaims this is Hispanic Heritage Month. And with that, I'd like to present this with you, you don't need a paperclip. And who, you want to get that, sir? Would you like, would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, it's a great honor for Niños Latinos Ninos to have a gift from our community from Bellflower that will recognize our work in the, in the community for, for the city and also for our kids. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And they give me the microphone, so I have to say, it's a pleasure for us to have to receive this honor from the City of Bellflower. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think they've said what
Pictures. Okay. I'm going to introduce Captain Hartman of the Los Angeles County Sheriff Department. And he's going to come up here and say a few things regarding an incident that we had over the weekend, I believe it was Saturday afternoon.
That's correct. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, for allowing me to be here this evening. I do want to address, there was a gathering at Thompson Park this past Saturday between about 5 and 7:00 p.m. I know there is some possible concerns from the council and maybe the, the general public because there's been some past incidents at Thompson Park. I'd like to start with, first of all, it's not related to anything in the past. This gathering was a family reunion, for lack of better terms, a gathering of individuals. It's a rather, rather large gathering. There were some calls for service that were generated to the Sheriff's Department. We did respond to those. They were primarily in relation to parking. Parking issues, things of that nature. And I can certainly understand a concern from the general public when they see a large gathering, especially if it's a perception, some of them may be gang members or not. I can certainly understand that concern, and we share that concern because we are committed as a sheriff department to ensuring the safety of everyone using the park, everyone at the park, and the surrounding community. And we definitely have a genuine concern for the quality of life issues that may affect the residents that live in and around the park area. So with that, the parking issues were addressed. There were some announcements made over the PAs going through the park. A lot of vehicles were moved. That issue was resolved. Throughout this event, we have four cameras that monitor Thompson Park. So our watch commander was monitoring what he saw on the screen in relation to what feedback he was getting from patrol personnel that were out there. There was no need to call in additional resources with that. It was being resolved and handled appropriately. So with that, again, we, there's always that balance of the constitutional rights of everybody involved. We're certainly going to go out and seek cooperation from individuals, and we're going to address things as we see occur in front of us, and try to always maintain that safety and order in the park. So I'd be willing to address any, any questions or concerns regarding that.
Any questions from the diocese of the captain? I think you did a good job. The report I got went, went well. I was glad to hear it wasn't the, the same entity that was there before. And obviously, what we saw on social media was not anything like it was two weeks prior and whatnot, and I think it was handled well. And, and with that said, I think that, you know, all the community that doesn't, our community doesn't know that the Sheriff's Department has direct access to cameras at, I believe, all our parks now. And supervised parks, anyway. And there's cameras there, and, and if there's anything going on, you can turn them on and start monitoring them at the instant in real time. And I think that is a big, big help because we can, you know, if you have a couple of complaints is one thing, and then you can go to the cameras and find out how bad the situation is.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Coops.
So it's come, you know, after having the park situation that developed a couple of weeks ago, and we had all the constituents in here concerned, and we thought maybe we'd have the same thing happen tonight, but obviously it was a different situation. But it's come to my attention that many times when our park personnel are on duty and in our parks, activities go on like they do in all parks, where there's
in our parks, activities go on like they do in all parks, where there's liquor, cannabis, other illegal activities are going on, and they will call for some service, and hopefully they show up in a somewhat quick time. But then they cruise the park, and they leave, and park personnel is left with the idea that, you know, you guys squealed on us, and it's difficult. I wondered what the protocol is in the old days. Now, again, I'm old as dirt, but it used to be that the, the officers would actually get out of their vehicles, engage the people, dump their liquor out, take their cannabis, do whatever is necessary to make sure that they complied to what the rules are. Is that too much, does that go on, or is that too much to ask for that kind of activity?
No. So if we receive a call like that, especially from park staff, and people are identified by who may be creating this disturbance, my expectation is that we will get out of our car, and we're going to go talk to those people. Now, obviously, if they're not physically drinking the alcohol in front of us, we can't even write a citation for drinking in public. Their beer can be sitting there, but unless they're actually, we see them consuming it, we can't cite it. We certainly can then direct them that they need to leave the park. Is this your beer? Whatever the case may be, you need to leave. Same thing with the cannabis, unless they're smoking it in front of us, you know, we may not have the ability to search them, to locate it based on their rights. But I, my expectation is, we're going to get out of the car, and we're going to talk to those people and see what needs to be done.
Were you aware that those kinds of activities were on Saturday afternoon from five to seven? That they were engaging those kinds of activities? And it was not addressed?
No, I was not aware that it was not addressed. I knew they went through the park. When you're dealing with a large group of people like that, being able to actually pinpoint who that person is may be more difficult.
Right.
When I, when I'm referencing what I was talking about, usually that's where there's a small group. We have four to five teenagers over here. When you're dealing with over a hundred people going out and trying to confront a hundred people like that, which one of you are drinking or something like that, may be a little bit more of a challenging task.
Right.
To that end, so there's a couple of different dynamics in effect there. But I still would say that if, if they witnessed that, that it would need to be addressed. And if they feel they need more people, we have all the resources available that they can have more people come.
So you can assure me that if our park staff calls and asks, and says that they have gone of illegal activities, your people will be able to respond in a way that will put them boots on the ground and be able to take a closer look rather than just arriving by the park and saying, everything's cool?
Absolutely. And that's my expectation, and that's certainly something that after leaving here tonight, I'll reiterate to our personnel.
Thank you very much.
And with a follow-up to Councilmember Coops, so that would be actually taking names down for the record, for retaliation purposes?
Yes, we can do that also.
I mean, I would think that would be normal if you're going to go talk to somebody, all the deputies have notepads, you'd write a name down, or check an ID or whatever for, in case somebody gets mad and takes revenge on staff.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Garza.
Just a couple of comments. I wanted to thank the captain for coming here tonight, first of all. It's very reassuring to see you here tonight. I wanted to commend you and your staff for, and our public safety staff as well, for the work that you've put in to, to have contingencies just in case so that what happened those last three weekends is not repeated. I know there's, there's a limitation in terms of how much you can prevent, but knowing that there's contingencies in case of you encounter that situation, to prevent it from spilling out to our neighborhoods is really reassuring. So I know sensitivities are a little heightened at this point because of what happened recently, but I wanted to thank you for the commitment to Bellflower and to you and your staff. And we're just hoping that we won't get a repeat of what happened before. But again, I wanted to thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Captain. Very much thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, Mr. Stewart, item 10, public comments, please.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you want to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. That's, anybody in the audience, this is a time you can come up to the podium and talk about anything you'd like to talk about, a reasonable amount of time that is not on the agenda.
Yeah, I have a question. We have another report as to how the patrol of the park, the private services, how many are homeless, how many other things going on as far as that new service we have, the patrol? How's that going as far as week by week, every two weeks? Well, Joe will be able to.
Oh, okay, the private park.
Yeah, we haven't finished it yet.
That's just a pilot program, so we really don't have any data right now. It's still in the, you know, getting information stage.
So we haven't gotten any data for?
Well, but no, but once we compile that, I'm sure Joel will sit down and walk you through it.
Yeah, there's nothing to, to, you know, show stats or anything like that of how it's going. It's still work in progress.
But no regrets so far?
So far.
Right.
Anybody else wishing to come forward?
Library manager.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of the Clifton Brackenseek Library, 9945 East Flower Street. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates about what's going on. The library will be closed on Monday, October 8, 2018, for Indigenous Peoples' Day. We are having a very special event on Saturday, October 13th. We're having famous author Barney Salzberg. He writes a lot of children's books and illustrates those books as well. So on Saturday, October 13th, 2018, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, join us as we welcome celebrated children's author and illustrator Barney Salzberg. The author will read from his books and provide an illustration demonstration. And this is most appropriate for ages three and up. And so we're really happy, and I hope that all of the parents and children in the area can come and meet him and learn how to draw like a professional. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to say something?
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I have a couple items I would like to discuss, and basically, I'm looking at a pension program that could possibly go south fairly soon, which I've brought it up several times by speaking bankruptcy and stuff like that. Well, the federal insurance program only ensures for so long on pension programs for union employees before it goes broke and can't guarantee the money anymore, which means for union guys that are paying into this with this CalPERS would lose everything they got. So I would like to see if there's a way to salvage this by getting out of CalPERS, if the city could find a way out of it, and put everything into a 401K plan for those employees where they can dictate as to how they want it invested and things of that nature. Because you can have some of these here, this is showing the evidence that by 2026, it's 90% assured that the federal insurance program that insures this money going into the pension plans will not be there, broke. So we need to step on it. Basically, I'm not out to condemn the unions that bad, but we got to come into reality with the unions, they need to look at it, and also partake in this. So I have a concern on that, and as I say, you can have these, it's pretty legit, our items. Now, the other thing I would like to bring up, which I've left it alone for a while, and your city staff has been great about rounding it up for me, which has taken me some time, and I held off because of a purpose that I wanted to. This is the apartment tax that I've griped about for several years, and nobody's done nothing. You've got this cannabis thing out there that's not generating any money after about a year of this stuff going on, because I'm finding out nothing's open yet, so they're not generating the dollars that you need. Plus, you're backing off on the utility tax of the extra percentage, so you need, you need a buffer to take that place. And the buffer really would be this, you know, it covers the utility, it covers the sheriff's stuff, a whole bunch of things. But you got to get off this $12 per unit apartment deal. Me, as a business that I have here in town, I don't do any work in this town, but I pay $181 a year for a business license, mainly because I don't do residential work and I can't compete against all the crooks. So if you look at an apartment unit, not the building, each unit is a business. That unit is generating, let's say, $1,200 up to $2,500 a month rent, and you're only getting $12? And who causes the problems? Not the homeowner. There's a couple that will, but basically not the homeowner, it's the renter. Where is all the tax abuse going to? Not the homeowner, or the property owner, let's say. It's the renter. I figure the girls here, here have given me some statistics, which basically has helped on me coming up with a couple suggestions. And the thing that really gets me is I'm showing 4,493 businesses in Bellflower. Well, there's more than that. I'm showing, if you take the business, which could be a strip mall with maybe five tenants in that building, and an apartment complex with 100 units in it, if you call them all units, and you still haven't got them all accounted for to begin with, you got 21,497. Now, if you take that by $181, because everyone's a business generating it, that's $3,890,000 that this city has never collected because charging $12 a unit for over 25 years, what an embarrassment. And the embarrassment is not with you people sitting there right now, it's with your predecessors because they're too busy about protecting their own friends and all the, all the group that puts them in office and stuff, the controlling entities. Well, it's time to change, but here's a way to legally pick up almost $1 million bucks. And then you've got staff, some of your city staff, like your code enforcement, things like that, people can go over to the county building with a bunch of addresses, what this owner occupies, is this a rental? Nobody knows how many single-family homes are rentals in this town. Nobody has a clue. The staff doesn't ask the question, and they're being very honest about it. Jeez, we don't know. Nobody's ever looked into it. Nobody knows how many rental units you have. So I think it's about time, and your election's over, so nobody's going to vote you out of office in two years down the road, they're all going to forget about this, except for me, maybe, that they can, they can chime on, which I couldn't care less. But it's time to sit down and do something right. Quit stabbing the poor homeowner to pay for all this junk, all this menagerie of garbage, the eucalyptus street crap, the cornula junk. And you may even find some money in here by doing it correctly to help create some sort of a homeless problem solver for you to use. Because the church can't take care of the homeless, they, they really don't want to. Give them a couple of sneakers and loaf of bread, and they're underway. But it'd be a start on getting some revenue coming in. And especially with you leaving off, what was it, 2%? You went up and then agreed to drop off. And you need to cover that because you can't crank the reporting presses up anymore. They've left town with those $200 bills several years ago from some of the electors people that live here. But basically, this would generate some money for you. So I don't mean to be that harsh about it, but staff has done their best at pulling this together for me, and I commend them for their due diligence of attempting the best they could. But I think we need to take it a step further and find out what really is in Bellflower. Now, the other part that concerns me, that you're losing money on, the contractor like myself. I come to you and tell you to pull a permit as owner builder. Well, basically, I can't buy that permit any cheaper than you can, number one. But you lose the business license, the $181 bucks offered every damn one of them. And then, something goes wrong, you got these poor homeowners or owners coming to the likes of you people crying wolf, "Somebody really got me, you need to help me." Well, there's nothing you can do. But you're going to be held accountable for it because they're going to insist you were the problem. But the homeowner, there are certain things that you need to overlook and let them do it themselves, but when it comes to electrical, gas, plumbing, I would not let any homeowner play owner builder with those items because that's the catastrophe ones. The rest of it, you can kind of look at such and such. But those are critical things, especially electrical. Joe Blow does your electrical, the house burns down, you turn to your insurance, they say, "Who done it?" "Oh, my little handyman." Well, sorry, you don't get a dime for your house because you let it burn down. So are you looking out for your constituents here in town? Not really. So these are concerns I have that I thought I would bring to your attention, and especially the apartment tax. It's about time to move on it, and everybody should be paying the same. And I think we should stop this raising at $1 a year, which is ongoing. Set it at 180, charge everybody 180. There's over $3 million bucks. But every business, you got to look at that unit and quit worrying about all these apartment owners crying wolf. Well, they're not crying wolf when they get that check every month from that poor renter that takes food out of his, out of his kid's pocket probably and stuff, because he's got to pay that $1,500 to $2,500 a month. That's a pretty good income offered each unit. And if you have 50 units, something's up there. Now, I don't know if you can collect money off in the mobile home parks, which are a disaster to begin with. We're trying to work with you on trying to do something, a couple of us, and hopefully it comes, it's coming this way correctly. But are you collecting, are you able to collect off the home, mobile home parks so much you have? I know it's state funded or state run, so the city really doesn't have much they can do there, but it'd be worth looking into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
First of all, the last Equorapid meeting didn't go so well.
They couldn't hear it, you couldn't hear again?
No, there were four microphones. One didn't work, one died in the middle, and the acoustics are really bad in there, so even when the poor people yelled, we couldn't hear a whole one. It was better because it lasted a little bit longer, but it, nothing was fixed.
Okay, well, they're working on it. We do know that. We're spending money now.
Okay, that being said, I have something else I would like to discuss with all of you. I have an idea, and that is to see if there is any way that, well, let me just read what I wrote because it makes it much easier. People in Bellflower has expressed a great dissatisfaction with the lack of communication from the city hall and feel it's past time that there are better lines of communication provided for everyone. Non-English speaking residents still have no voice at this time. Non-English-speaking residents still have no voice at this time, and they also need a means to be heard. With today's technology, it would be possible for the city to create an interactive site, perhaps a web, webx.com online meeting or something to that effect, where residents can participate in the meetings, have their comments added to the meeting minutes. That would give you all a better perspective on how best to serve the whole community, give the residents a chance to find out more about what's going on, and have a better voice in the decisions being made for them. You might also consider creating a Facebook page where people can ask questions, make comments, praise those whom they feel you should acknowledge, and voice concerns and complaints that might need to be addressed in council. Now more than ever, people want to know what's happening in their city and in our city. Before it's a done deal, they want, before it's a done deal, they want and have the right to have a voice. As I have repeatedly stated to the council, transparency is lacking, and this would be a great way to fix that problem. In the past, the response has been that you give proper notice by posting in the Wave newspaper, posting a notice in here on the bulletin board at City Hall and one at Brackenseek Library. The Wave newspapers delivers thirty to forty copies a week at City Hall. How many of the seventy thousand residents in the city come to City Hall to pick, to pick up one? And if they did, they wouldn't be able to get one. And how many of them pay attention to what's on the stand, let alone pick up a copy of the Wave when they do come into the city? I've tried on many occasions to find the notice in the Wave newspaper. I found one, and it was a copy of the title page. A couple of the people told me that once they found it in the legal section. This is not transparency.
Can I stop this right here? We have a Facebook page, we have a Twitter account. We, legally, we cannot accept communications online during a meeting. They can submit something in writing, uh, prior to the meeting if they want to beforehand, and they can certainly attend the meeting. The whole function of these meetings is to promote people attending them personally, and there is no legal vehicle by which we can have them participate from a remote site. Now, honestly, and we've been through this multiple times over the last couple of years, the city has a fairly strong web presence and is growing. And we have integrated most of the suggestions that you've talked about, if not all of them frankly, over the last two years. And the, the last thing about this electronic plebeicide that you seem to be promoting frankly is against the law. So, I don't know exactly where that's coming from. Now, if we're missing the point on something, that's one thing. But it gets a little old, knowing how much work we do on social media, for somebody to stand up and bang on us repeatedly about not working with social media to reach out to the public. We do a fairly good job at that.
You are, you have done, you have made tremendous strides. But still, there are a lot of people in the city that can't, they don't have, uh, internet. They don't use the, um, computer. They have no way of knowing what's going on in here, and that's what, you know, and the ones who do have internet. And, and the other thing is those who do have internet, when I'm posting on Facebook, they say, you know, we can't attend the meetings. I didn't know it was illegal.
Well, if they're on Facebook, they, if, if you're on Facebook, you can go to the website and get the information. It's, they're, they're both computers.
I understand that, but they can't.
They're both social media.
I was just trying to find a way for more people to be able to come to, you know, participate. I didn't know that that was illegal.
Well, our meetings are every the second and fourth Monday all year long.
I always post it.
It's always been that way, it's free.
Meetings coming, I always post it. But a lot of people work, a lot of people have kids, they can't come. And that's who I was talking about. So, you know, I apologize if I offended you. I did not mean any offense. I just wanted to see if there was a way to include more people in our community that can participate in this. So, I thank you for your time, and again, I apologize. I did not mean to offend any of you.
Oh, not offended, but I just got, didn't understand what the website is, is best better than most cities.
I'm offended when you say we aren't transparent.
I told you before. You have, the staff has done tremendous in making things a lot more transparent. There's a lot more people involved. But there's a lot that are still being left out. And those are the ones I'm trying to find a way that we can get them involved.
So, you know all those people that are left out? Are they, is there a mailing list that we can, you know?
No, I was asking you, I, I was.
Well, I don't know who they are. You say that there's a lot of people that are left out, and I thought maybe you knew them.
Because I talk to people around the community, and they don't.
Well, start getting names and numbers and, or some, you know, or if they don't have an email address or some addresses, and we could probably send them a posting of the, you know, of the agenda.
Okay. I tell them to go online, but that's, I know, you're, you're, you're.
If it's that much of a problem, then we can start sending letters, but we're gonna need some names, you know, addresses.
Yeah, I think you and I have different pictures, but that's okay. I get what you're saying, and it's okay. I just, you know, I, I just have a different perspective and a different thought process. But I can see that it's probably, because if you can't go online, it's not, it's not gonna be able to be feasible in any way.
Well, no, I didn't ask that, I didn't ask that. I said, give us some names and addresses, and we would be more than happy to send them what the agenda is.
I will, I will do that.
Let me start by saying, there's multiple ways to reach out to us. The council, the staff, everybody in this room. You can, you can reach out by writing a letter, calling on the telephone, emailing, Facebooking, twittering, or coming to the, the meeting. Short of that, I don't know what else we could offer unless I'm missing something. But we have a very talented coordinator on this, and I will reach out to her tomorrow and see if there's anything we're missing on, on the social media side of this thing. But quite honestly, and because this is not the first time you've stood up and said this, we take those accusations very seriously. And I would argue that this city council has worked very hard ensuring that we're transparent. And I do get defensive about that. And you know that, and you know that we work hard on doing this. And everything that you suggested that we do, that we haven't been doing, we did. And we will continue to do so. If there's a constructive criticism that's to be made, and we're missing the mark on something, I'm all ears. But to stand up and tell the city council, there's many people in the community that are angry because they can't reach out to the city council, I, that may be true. I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna argue with you. But I'm, but I'm mystified by how we could better reach them. If there was a way to do it legally, we're all in. And we will do that, and you know that.
And I didn't know that it was illegal, because I thought that would be the perfect solution. I had no idea it was illegal. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garza.
Just make some quick comments, just, right quick, I'll make them quick. Um, I just wanted to tell everyone.
I'm about to say something.
The, um, the doors to our city council chamber are open. Um, I think staff and a lot of us make a big effort and a great effort to engage as much of our community as possible to come out here to our meetings. Um, I see a lot of people engaged in social media, a lot of people make comments. Um, I see a lot of people that encourage other people to come to our council meetings. But at the end of the day, we can't force anybody to come here. Um, that's outside of our control. And so, we encourage people, I know I encourage people to come, but I can't force them to be here. So, um, I hope they, they watch us on TV, and I welcome to keep making comments. But, um, I really encourage more people to come here if, if it is that they want to be engaged to come here to our council chamber. Um, again, it's always open, to the mayor's point. People know when these meetings take place. Um, that's all really we can do. We can't force anybody to come in here, so. Just thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make those.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. We good down there?
Want to say something?
What?
You got anything to, yeah?
Why are we wasting all this time on this stupid shit?
Well, we want to hear the public's opinion.
We have heard the public's opinion twenty times. Twenty times this meeting, twenty times last meeting, twenty times the meeting before.
I get it. All right, I think we're done with that.
Mr. Mayor, uh, let me just add something. And for, for those that don't have access to the internet, um, Instagram, Facebook, whatever, those are kind of low-tech, they're still the phone. And some residents still call me. So, they can always call, that's what we're here for. So, that's, that's the ultimate solution. If they don't have access to any of those high-tech gadget, use the phone. In fact, today I got three phone calls from residents. So, continue calling us, because we are here to serve you. Thank you.
Yeah, but that said, I believe all of us have our phone numbers listed, besides City Hall's number.
And our business.
Yeah, they're, she had cell phones for me too, yeah. But anyway, I think we're pretty approachable. Okay, with that, any other public comments? Not seeing any. Item eleven A, Mr. Stewart.
This is considering a possible action regarding appeal of an abatement cost associated with the city's abatement of an unlicensed cannabis facility located at nine zero seven eight Artesia Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor, um, may I just say something about this item before we start? Uh, in the spirit of transparency, I just want to disclose that today I got a phone call from an individual advocating for the postponement of this item. And I advise him to instead call the director of planning. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to echo exactly, uh, Mr. Santi's comments. I experienced the same thing as well.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I would just like to provide a brief, a brief background regarding the notice of, uh, notice of abatement, public nuisance, and the appeal of the cost. On June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, our code enforcement officers discovered an unlicensed cannabis facility at nine zero seven eight Artesia Boulevard. On June twentieth, two thousand eighteen, a notice of public nuisance was issued to both the property owner and the business to cease operation. On July third, staff obtained an abatement warrant and shut down the business. The city utilized a locksmith services to lock up the site. Between July third and July tenth, the business illegally reopened two times. At each time, the locksmith was called out to lock up the property. On July fifth, staff issued a notice advising that utilities would be shut off, and those utilities were subsequently shut off on July tenth. Between June twenty-sixth and July tenth, the city issued several administrative citations of five thousand dollars each. A total of five citations were issued for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. The appeal period to contest, to contest these citations have expired. So, this is not subject to the appeal this evening. On or about July twenty-sixth, the locksmith had to re-lock the premises because the site was broken into. And that was a total of four times the locksmith had to come out to the property. The city's code allows the city to seek reimbursement of the city's costs, fees, and expenses in abating the public nuisance. And therefore, on August thirteenth, a statement of abatement cost was sent to the property owner, and the property owner timely filed an appeal of that statement. The slide above breaks down the original city's abatement cost that was sent to the property owner. Um, as you can see, the subtotal for the city attorney's fees, the locksmith's services fees, and code enforcement fees is three thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. The twenty-five thousand dollar citation, um, again, that appeal has expired. So, the only thing that's being appealed tonight is the three thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, since the city has sent out that cost statement, we did relook at the numbers. We did find a couple of errors, and we have adjusted that total to three thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine cents, which is a difference of forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents from the original statement. More, more. That concludes my presentation. I have both David King from the city attorney's office here and David Fawcett, our code enforcement supervising officer, if you have any questions regarding those costs.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, yeah, we're gonna go first. Uh, Ms. Corpus, can you bring up the, uh, the timeline again? The previous slide, okay. So, um, I just want to focus on a couple of things. One is on, from June twenty-sixth to July tenth. So, five citations were sent to the, uh, the company, uh, the appellant. So, um, how much time do they have to appeal that citation? Although, it's not subject to this appeal, but I just want to understand it so that everyone understands what we're talking about here. So, when was their deadline to appeal that citation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the, um, the deadline should be stated in the administrative citation. And if I recall correctly, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, I believe the appeal period is ten days.
Oh, ten days, okay. So, the last one was July tenth, so basically July twenty, that was their last day to appeal the last citation. So, there's nothing more for them that they can do to appeal that. It's, it's done, in terms of the twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's exactly correct.
Okay, so, the second thing, so basically what we are dealing with tonight is basically the, uh, the less than four thousand dollars in, um, in cost recovery, so to speak, that the city spent, uh, in terms of, of pursuing this illegal cannabis facility. Okay, that's all, thank you.
My question is that were the locks changed on the place prior to the reopening?
Yes, sir, the locks were changed each time. We rekeyed the locks and rechanged them, and then they broke back in.
So, pretty much they were broken, they were, you know, breaking back in to open up for business.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I understood in the report, I just wanted to, out in the open.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by, uh, Mayor Pochin, Sunny Santines, and, uh, second by Juan Garza. Anybody in the audience want to come forward and talk on this item?
Mr. Mayor, um, we'll need to swear in any public testimony.
Oh, okay. With that, anybody other than this, just stand up, I'm gonna have everybody stand up if they think they're gonna come talk, if they know they're gonna come talk. If you think you might not talk, and you probably will, I need you to stand now so we don't, so we can administer the oath so we don't waste time later. Because I know that there's always somebody in the crowd that wants to talk, and I might not be in the mood to have another swearing in. Okay, so just you two, okay.
Can you please raise your right hands? Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give and the matter pending before the city council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ordinarily, for these types of hearings, the appellant, it's, has first crack at, at the testimony before any public comment on it.
Okay. Let's have the appellate come up here, and then you can let us know what's on your mind or whatnot, and then we'll hear from the public. And state your name and, and for the record, please.
My name is Carlos Sandoval, and I am a business associate of the owner.
A business associate such as operator? Uh, landlord?
No, I actually, I am the, uh, in-house broker for an investment company.
Go on, Mr. Sandoval.
Good evening, and blessings to the Honorable Mayor Ray Dunton, to Councilmember Juan Garza, Sunny Santines, and, uh, I cannot.
Coops.
And Councilmember Dan Coops, and Ron Schladberg.
That was close.
Hey, you did a good job.
I apologize for my. I apologize. Okay, my, so my name is Carlos, like I stated. And unfortunately, the owner cannot be here, and he was interested in being here today. But he has a very religious wife and three little ones, and it's a Jewish holiday today. It's so good today. So, he's very interested in keeping a good name with the city of Bellflower. He actually purchased the property, it's a thirty-five thousand square foot lot, because he planned on developing the property. And actually, we were interested in addressing the city to see what else could be built on the property. Unfortunately, we had a missing unfortunate tenant that was hard-headed and did not want to leave the location. And, um, you know, we felt that the fines were excessive from our perspective. I know the city has their own point of view, but we wanted to see, we had one request. And the request was to continue until the next meeting so we could do more research and get more, more information that we felt, felt that we need. The, um, the tenant represented itself as Trinity Church, if I'm not mistaken. And that was their representation. So, we'd like to request for this to continue to the next meeting. So we'd like to request for this to continue to the next meeting, if that's okay with you.
We'll list here for the public first. We're gonna close the public hearing, and if one of the body up here decides to make a motion to that, we'll go down that road, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you for hearing.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wanting to speak?
Well, I guess I'll be the one. John Butts, I'm a business owner here in town. And the understanding is, the gentleman just before me, this is Mr. Sandoval, I guess, is representing the owner of the property. And the owner rented the facility, or his representative rented the facility to this Trinity Church, from my understanding. And nobody can tell me, if you get whacked five times, that the owner of the property wasn't aware of what's going on. And nobody can tell me that the representative or the owner didn't know what was going on and didn't do his due diligence. And I personally have been deaf on drugs, as a lot of you people know the reason for that. To diminish this fine would be a slap in the community's face. That's number one. I think you're too light. But in your original deal on issuing these things, I believe you had a deal in there of the $5,000 a day, and then for each day doesn't appear to get to court, there's a charge on that, and both parties would suffer, not just the owner of the property, but also the party that illegally selling stuff to put other people, they put their good faith money up front to try to do it legitimately and laugh in the face of this city. So to back off from this and postpone it, I would say you're gonna slap the city of Bellflower in the face if you do that. I'm concerned with the property owner's money of only $3,923.09. I thought that was in your documents for each item, that the property owner would suffer the same amount of money as the party that rented the property, which would be $5,000 for each infraction. So there's $25,000, not $23,000. And I'm all for holding both parties to the fire because you have taken almost two years of the city's time, the staff's time, to put this together, to try to do things right. Instead of having some clowns come in here, figure they can just ram through old Bellflower and get away with it. It's time to draw the line. And I'm saying the property owner now owes $25,000 plus the locks, plus the other stuff and the staff's time.
Yeah, the accounting is $28,900 and change. Not to $23,000. Yeah.
Yeah, where did you get the $23,000?
He missed a five, I think. Yeah.
Well, I got the $3,923.
Where's the 23? I don't see the 23 at all. He said $23,000 earlier.
23, 25 is what I got.
Oh, 25, okay. 25 plus 4,000.
Plus the, yeah.
With $5,000 for each infraction, that's 25, now you got your three locks and stuff, so there's the 28.
Does it represent, but you want to come up and rebut anything this gentleman said? You're welcome.
We immediately instructed the tenant to leave. As you see, he broke in back three times, three or four times, I forget what it was. It took us about two weeks to get a hostile tenant out of there. When you have a hostile tenant, a two-week timeframe does not seem unreasonable to me. We did everything in our power to correct the situation. Again, two weeks with a hostile tenant does not seem like an excessive period of time to get, to be able to convince him to leave. We did our best. We worked on it. We had like about five people working on it around the clock, trying to get them out. So if any of you are property owners that ever have had a hostile tenant, two weeks is not unreasonable for us.
What were you leasing the property for?
For what use?
No, what were you leasing it? What was the monthly rent?
I do not have that information on hand. I do not.
What was the use that you were renting it for?
Trinity Church. That's my understanding.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Sandoval, you're a realtor, right?
I'm a real estate broker.
How much do you think is the value of that property? You said it's made of 35,000 square feet. So how much does it worth roughly?
I don't want to give you a wrong number. I found the property.
Just a ballpark. I wanted to hold you, you want to be accountable?
It was recently purchased for 1.6, I believe.
1.6 million dollars. Okay. All right, that's a ballpark.
Yeah.
And we're dealing with $4,000 here against the value of 1.4 million dollars.
We have no, we have no issue with the fees that you have incurred. That's, there's no issue with that. We understand that the city has spent that money, and we respectfully would pay that amount. The issue is the $25,000.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, the $25,000, I clarified from the very beginning, the $25,000 is not appealable. It's done.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can do about it. The only thing, the only thing we are discussing tonight is the $4,000. That's it. We're not talking about $25,000, sir.
So you're saying the $25,000 is not...
I clarified earlier, it's a done deal, and the city attorney clarified that. It's done. There's nothing more we can do about it. Because I, from the very beginning, I clarified that the appeal process already expired. That's it.
There's a reason why we have the $5,000 citation, because they were running rampant through the city and whatnot, and we kind of get people's attention pretty quick now.
I understand.
It works.
I understand. I mean...
Yeah. And there's a lot of people that know who they're renting for. You may not know who you rented to because it was an undercover church or whatever, but there's a lot of people that know who they're renting to. Yeah. But anyway, that's, you know, the $25,000 we're not talking about tonight. We're only talking about the $3,900, and that is the actual cost.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. The only thing we can talk about tonight is the $3,900.
Would you grant the owner a moment to come and speak to the city?
He's not here. You said he wasn't here.
No, with the continuance.
With the continuance. So we'll talk, if somebody wants to put it as a motion up here, when we start deliberating up here and go into the discussion, I should say, and that can be an option. You've already planted in everyone's head up here.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. No, because he's a, we're done. Yeah, sorry, John. Sorry. We're gonna be playing ping pong here if not. Okay, we got a motion to close the public hearing, and was there a second by Garza and a motion by Coops? Without objection, that'll be the order. What's your pleasure, guys?
Well, so I asked the value of the property again. $4,000 against 1.4 million. I think it's a drop in the bucket, so I don't see any reason why we would continue this. It's a small amount that we're dealing with.
I don't want to continue it. I want to get it over with.
Okay. And it's, you know, and we've held our feet to the fire, so to speak, with all other illegal operators under the same circumstances and followed through, and I see no reason to break precedents.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make just a quick comment, just a quick comment. I'd like the public to know that even though $5,000 may seem like a lot, I think if it was, if it was up to the council, those fines would be higher, and we're actually limited because of advice that it would be excessive. So I just want to point out that we really do not welcome unlicensed cannabis facilities in the city of Bellflowers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Okay. Gentlemen, any more discussion, or what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, if I may suggest a motion based upon the discussion would just be a motion to confirm the $3,973.09 as the, I'm just making sure that the figures are corresponding with the staff report, making, confirming that amount as the full fees owed by this appellant to the city.
I'll make the motion.
In that form?
In that form.
Verbatim to the city. Yeah, it says, says in the...
The city clerk get it?
I'll second that.
He's got it.
He's got it.
I'll second that.
So we're gonna send, the city clerk's gonna send the statement.
Revised statement.
Revised statement. Okay, got it. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember, I mean, a motion by Mayor Protem Santi-Santines and a second by Juan Garza. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santines.
Aye.
Councilmember Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Schnablaker.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, if the appellant does not pay the $25,000 that is otherwise owed, the City Council or the city will take appropriate action to lien the property or to go and send them to collections to collect that amount.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stewart?
The next item you have tonight is...
Levine.
...consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal year 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or the CAPR, and adopt Resolution 18-61, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the fiscal year 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR, to the United US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we have several folks in the development to make a presentation to you tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The city is conducting a public hearing to review and receive public comment on the fiscal year 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR. The US Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, requires the city to annually submit a CAPR that summarizes the activities funded through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Funds, also known as HOME. As a bit of background, every five years, HUD requires the city to prepare a separate document called the Consolidated Plan that lists the housing and economic development activities funded with CDBG and HOME. The current 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan has identified the city's needs and set the following goals to address them. One, increase and retain affordable housing stock in the city. Number two, create suitable living environments by improving neighborhood safety, facilities, and services, thereby reducing blight. And number three, to encourage economic opportunity through job creation and services. These activities are all targeted towards low-income households in the city. Each year, HUD also requires the city to prepare an annual action plan that sets the budgets and activities to carry out the goals of the Consolidated Plan, and this year's CAPR evaluates their success for fiscal year 2017-2018. CDBG funds in particular are meant to improve living conditions and promote economic development through job creation and services. And the funds must assist low- to moderate-income persons, particularly in blighted areas. Last year, HUD allocated approximately $968,000 in CDBG funds towards such activities. These activities include, one, Fair Housing Foundation. The foundation's services promote fair housing practices between residents and landlords, and some of these activities include enforcement of fair housing laws and litigation if needed, discrimination counseling, complaint intake and resolution, education and outreach. Last fiscal year, Fair Housing Foundation was able to provide their services to 259 households and spent their budgeted funds of $26,000. Kingdom Causes is also another public service agency that receives CDBG funds from the city to provide employment services and jobs through their Good Souls program. They provided the community with job training classes, case management, and resources such as resume building. And their Good Souls program in particular employed about 15 residents to provide landscaping services. Kingdom Causes also spent its budgeted funds of $20,000. The city also has the Volunteer Center, as you're all aware. The center trained 1,400 volunteers who served 16,000 hours last year. Their work included annual events such as the Backpack and School Supplies Drive, the Holiday Food and Toy Drive, the Spring Basket Event, and other events. The volunteer spinner spent $80,000 of its budget while maintaining the same level of services and activities as the previous year.
No worries.
Multitaskers.
I know. CDBG also partially funds the city's code enforcement activities, specifically in CDBG tracks. Last year, there were 697 code enforcement cases in these tracks, and the city spent $282,000 approximately of CDBG funds for those activities. Also, CDBG funds, or at least half of them, are used for Section 108 loan repayment. The loan was a 20-year, $7 million loan taken out in 2004 to rebuild blighted areas and promote economic development in downtown, which is also a CDBG-eligible tract. The city is obligated to make payments using CDBG funds through 2020 annually. And lastly, the city also pays, uses CDBG funds to pay for staff who will ensure that all complex federal HUD regulations are followed in the implementation of CDBG programs. On a different note, the city also receives home funds, home funds from HUD, and HOME is meant to retain, retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners. And last fiscal year, the city received about $289,000 in home funds. The home funds fund certain programs throughout the city, the first being the Housing Rehabilitation Program, which provides applicants with a 0% to 3% interest rate loan or grant to make improvements to their existing homes. The city was able to qualify three applicants for the program, spending about $119,000 of its budget. To qualify, home value must be below $476,900, and applicants must be low-income. And these HUD, these are HUD restrictions, and in today's costly housing market, it makes it very difficult to qualify applicants at times. Secondly, the city also has a first-time homebuyer's assistance program, and it provides applicants with up to $50,000 in loan, in down payment assistance. Loans are repaid upon the sale of the home. Last year, one applicant qualified for the program and spent $52,000 in home funds. Under the home regulations, at least 15% of home funds must also be set aside for a project led by a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO. Partnership Housing is one such CHODO that received home funds from the city to build six new homes in the southwest part of the city on Ramona Street, which is also known as the Habitat for Humanity Project. This project received funds to partly acquire city-owned property and construct the homes. And lastly, home funds are also used for administrative costs to help qualify the applicants and also ensure that HUD regulations are met. And to, going forward to improve the success of this program, the city may continue to market the programs, but through different outlets, and possibly also consider using future and carryover funds towards a larger, more significant CHODO project so that we can continue to increase the stock of affordable housing in the city. The city is also very aware of the homelessness crisis affecting the county and is continuing to provide services to the city's homeless. According to the 2017 Greater LA Homeless Count, there were approximately 168 homeless persons living in the city. However, funds for the homeless are extremely limited. We don't receive special funds, and HOME and CDBG funds cannot be used for homeless shelters. As a result, the city... As a result, the city often refers to public agencies, such as the LA Homeless Services Authority, the county, and Our Place Housing Solutions, to meet the needs of the underserved. Services that they provide are often hotel vouchers, clothing, job search, food, and transport. In particular, the city's successor housing agency has a contract with Kingdom Causes and their program Our Place Housing Solutions to assist households from becoming homeless. And these funds are from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Funds, which are separate from CDBG and HOME funds. They are not federal funds. And they're used towards rental vouchers and case management. And last year, Our Place Housing Solutions was able to support 31 extremely low-income households with rental vouchers and case management. So these are the primary accomplishments of the city's HOME and CDBG programs last fiscal year, and they are reported in the CAPER. The next steps going forward are, is for the 2017-18 CAPER to be, to continue to be available for a 15-day public comment period through September 27. The public notice was duly published twice in the Wave newspaper. And public comments received will be included in the CAPER prior to its submission to HUD, which is actually due on September 30. And following HUD's review and approval, the CAPER will be finalized and posted on the city's website. So our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, consider testimony, and approve the CAPER, and also to adopt Resolution 18-61, authorizing the city manager to submit the CAPER to HUD with the addition of any public comments received during the public comment period. And that concludes the presentation.
That's what I was waiting for. Okay, I didn't want to butt in. Everybody butted in once. Any questions, the staff, or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Comments and que... Ms. Jim, thank you so much for your very comprehensive report. When you showed the listing of items today, tonight, are you shoving budget against actual? Okay, so I'm assuming that the budget was combination of 17-18 budget plus carryover from the prior years?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And then expenditures for 2017 and 18?
Yes.
So what I'd like to know is, at the end of 17-18 year, how much is left? What's the carryover going into the 18-19 year?
We are expected to have about $377,000 in carryover to 18-19.
And then how much the new funding for 18-19 year?
18-19 about, oh, for HOME, and sorry, that was for HOME. And HOME funds for 18-19, we were allocated about $402,000.
Okay. And CDBG?
CDBG about $1.035 million.
Again, how much is the carryover for HOME and how much is the carryover for CDBG?
Let's see. I should have that here.
Usually, there's a carryover column.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
That's what was missing, yeah.
Right. We are expecting to...
Now that you brought it up.
Sorry. About $400,000 in carryover for CDBG.
And then how about HOME?
For HOME, about $377,000.
Okay, so quite a chunk of money. Okay. Very good. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd recommend in the future to have the carryover column, because we were used to seeing.
Absolutely.
I didn't miss it until Sunny brought it up. You're spot on, Sunny.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, I've listened to these programs every year or every five years, and yours was the best. You laid this out in such a way that it was, it follows well. You provided all the information, and I want to commend you on what you put together here. It was very understandable, and I know what I'm talking about and what you're trying to convey. Thank you.
Yeah, it was simpler.
Yes. Somehow, it always got more complex when others did it, but you made it very understandable.
Or maybe we understand it more.
Yeah, maybe we're getting smart.
That might be, that might be part of it. No, I think it was the best presentation. I really think it was the best presentation. All right.
Move to open public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Public, anybody wanted to come to the podium and chime in on anything of this presentation? Not seeing that.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
And we have a public hearings now closed by the same two that opened it. What's your pleasure, guys?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-61.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilmember Coops and a second by our Pro Tem Sunny Santa Inez. Call roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Santainas?
Aye.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Snoblegger?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay. We have no ordinances. We have no consideration items, so we're gonna jump to the consent calendar. Anybody would like to pull any item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from item 14L due to a conflict with my job, and I'd like to pull item 14H.
Item what?
14H. So pull 14H.
Oh, pull. Okay, there we go. Okay, I just said, yeah, 14L, you're recusing yourself from 14H.
Thank you.
Let's go. Mr. Coops?
No, I'm in the clear, but I want to remind the city manager, he had one that he wanted to... All right.
Well, that's on...
Nacho? I can't find which number it is. But I know it's on there.
Yeah. Let me know what number it is. City clerk's gonna need to know that. And... Santa Inez?
Yeah, Mr. De Longa, about the correction, do you want... I don't want to pull the item, but just basically state the correction on item 14L.
Sure.
Let me step out of the room.
Oh, you...
No, you don't have to. Well, there's the correction. We're not gonna pull anything. Yes.
It's a typo correction.
Just type correction.
Yeah.
You're still right.
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah.
Councilmember...
Don't get nervous yet.
I'm bored.
Correction.
Item 14L, there was a typo or my bad addition that we didn't catch. The number in the fiscal impact is $285,000, not $240,000. So I'd like to make that correction.
So we're getting more money?
Correct.
Forty-five thousand more? Thank you, Sunny.
Anytime. Anyways, I can help.
Okay, so we got Juan and Sunny, and they're looking for that...
They're looking for the Nacho Mama.
And Mr. Snoblegger?
Yes, sir.
You gonna recuse yourself from any of those?
Nothing I know of.
14G, H, J, R. Yeah, HJ. Sorry?
There's nothing to pull.
Okay. I'd like to recuse myself, please. I'd like to recuse myself on 3S.
14G?
Huh?
14G. Yeah, read 14G.
Yeah. 3S, 14B, 14H, and 14J. And then 14... R.
And... Did you find that one yet?
It's not here.
It's not on... Okay. We were dreaming.
We just imagined it.
Wasn't it last, it was last meeting, two weeks ago? It was two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Yeah. For discussion or for...
For discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
14H. Yeah, that's, yes, I got you down for that. So we're all good. I just, okay, and then I'm gonna recuse myself from 14G. Okay. So now... Well, that's the only one we're discussing right now, 14H, so... Juan?
Ron.
Ron.
Snoblegger.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, we do that one last time. Well, wait a minute. Ron didn't, he recused on...
H.
Oh, H on 14H for discussion. Okay, yeah.
G, H, J, and R.
We can vote on it. Why don't we just vote on it, get it over with, and then have it, then you talk about... Yeah, yeah. Well, it's just a discussion matter, right? There's nothing gonna change? Okay. Okay. Myra, you want me to... Did you get all those numbers? Did you want me to run them down again? Or you got them? You got them? Okay, got it. Any motion on the consent calendar, anybody?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. And I'll let the city clerk see who went on the second.
I...
Juan's... It's all... Do we vote on it or...
No, without objection, that'll be the order.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So we're done voting, so now we can just talk on 14H, right? Okay.
It's just a question. I don't know if we have to...
No, we pulled H. So Juan's gonna leave the room and discuss it.
Yeah, but we already... No, we didn't pull it.
Juan pulled it.
Juan pulled it.
Well, you want to pull it for discussion. You said you weren't gonna change it. It was just pulled for discussion, not for...
But it's still pulled.
Voting.
But it's still pulled. For discussion.
For discussion.
Yes, sir.
Not to eliminate it. Not... We can't do that.
I thought we voted on it.
We voted on it?
Yeah, we voted on it.
That's fine. It's not an emergency.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal, seriously.
Yeah.
So we're good.
Because that's why I asked, it was discussion only, and you said nothing's gonna change.
Well, I think I know what he's gonna bring up.
You want to discuss it now?
No, I'm fine. We already voted. We...
We can rescind the vote?
It's not an emergency. Seriously, it's not.
Okay, so it's already voted on.
It's already voted on.
Let's go take a look at it.
You sure? Okay. So then, what I was gonna ask was if staff, 14H is related to the landscape improvements that are gonna be coming up at the main center regarding their wedding venue.
Correct.
And so I, in the interest of showing it to the community, what we're doing there, I asked staff if they can just show us a couple slides so the community gets to see. We've discussed this in special council sessions, but we haven't discussed it in front of the public, to my recollection. So I just wanted to show the public what it is that we're gonna be doing as they see construction going on, so...
Yes, certainly. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, just real briefly, real quick, this is a slideshow presentation that we did months back when we talked about the concept. So this is just a refresher on what the plans and specs that were before you tonight as item H will be doing out there around the PE Depot. So this is Bellflower Boulevard, looking towards the existing PE Depot in the breezeway. Again, here we have some nighttime. Bernie's there. Um, again...
Till it gets hot.
Yeah. Till we smell smoke. Again, there's just a series of, a series of renderings here of how the area will look. A lot of these are some of the nighttime images they, the architects chose to put them in this way. Uplighting against the main event center there through the pathway. And then here we go on some of the outdoor designs. You're talking about planting, replanting the front area and doing a marquee sign there in the front, carrying the planting theme through that breezeway, all around the PE Depot. Again, there's just another view of the PE Depot. That would be some additional paver work that we do and steps and stairs that would be coming down off the PE Depot onto the existing area. Just another shot of it. This would be the freight house. The concept here would be, this would be where some outdoor venues and events could take place. That would be a potential deck area where they can provide service out of that back room there that is not part of the original PE Depot. So that's not our historical part of the building, so we can do what we choose with there. Just another look at it again. And then there would be the grotto area where they could host the events. It'd be a slight retainer wall, planting in front of it, some new trees, decorative lighting, a proposed fire pit on the back end of the area. It's a couple of different concepts that, or slides that they'd shown to us. And again, some different trees. And remember, it was noted during the meeting that we would certainly shoot for the most mature trees and shrubbery that we can find out there on the market at the time of the construction. Just another view. And then obviously, the grotto slash courtyard area where we would be able to hold, or TGIS or whoever's catering events would be able to hold outdoor events out there. And we just have a couple more looks with the gazebo area up against the freight house building. And that concludes the slides there. Be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor. Again, I just wanted to show our residents, our community, what is that's coming here. I think it's exciting. And so as they start seeing our downtown revitalizing more and more, I think this is gonna be a nice little addition as well, so that was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
When do you hope to begin?
The, so in the report, I think we're shooting for the idea of awarding it with bids due October 18. So we're looking to advertise this right away with bids due on October 18 and be able to award it shortly thereafter. That's the timeframe we're looking at.
Mr. Mayor, it looks really nice. The question to you is, it's so nice. So can it be used, is it gonna be only used in conjunction with the use of the main event center?
Correct.
Okay, so it can be used separate from, let's say, if they want a party?
It will not be separate. It's considered a part of the main event.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Looks like Disneyland.
I wonder what it looks like in the daytime.
Take out the light bulbs.
Yeah. Good enough.
Okay.
Looks good. Did you, did you have something to say, Peter? Come up here. You know the program.
How much is actually budgeted for, as far as how much it costs? Are we paying?
Currently, currently, the budget's at $400,000. So we'll see what we get in on the...
That's a bid.
And that's, are we paying for it or is it Caltrans?
No, this has nothing to do with Caltrans.
City's paying for it. The caterer contributed $50,000 for the construction through the last bid process. The city's picking up the difference.
So $50,000, so 350?
Well, what that 50 covered was the design on this, so we left 400 out for construction, so...
450 altogether.
Good enough. Yeah, kudos. Great presentation and good idea to bring that up. With that, gentlemen, anybody have any council comments they want to share? How about, we'll start with Juan.
Okay. I'll make these really quick, Mr. Mayor. So I attended the League of Cities Conference that took place in Long Beach. I know that I and some members of staff went there as well for the three-day conference. You designated me as a delegate for the city. There were two resolutions that the league voted on. One of them was regarding pesticides. That was approved. The other one, the one that really wanted to bring more to your attention is the League of California Cities voted on a, we instructed league staff to explore having a, a measure brought up in the 2020 election that would protect cities from state raids. And it would do it in a way where it would be, it would be a constitutional amendment. So it would be protected within the constitutional amendment where the legislature would be, would have a challenge affecting it. So the reason I bring that up is, as you all remember, cities and the state had a pretty contentious battle back in the early 2010s with redevelopment. We're hoping that with these actions, that we'll be able to resolve some things before it gets to that point. But if not, the league has gone down this path, so it's gonna be an interesting couple of years coming up. The other thing is, on the 19th of September, I and some members of staff had a meeting with PATH, the homeless organization. And specifically, what I asked PATH staff to do is, is in a draft report, I, there were some items that I thought were lacking. And so I asked for PATH to provide a more accurate number of the homeless in our city and exactly what's causing the homelessness situation for them. So I thanked them for coming, and I thanked staff for mediating that. And then the last thing is, we as the City of Bellflower hosted the last Equal Rapid Meeting this past Wednesday, as Ms. McKinnis mentioned. And the next meeting will be in the... this past Wednesday, as Ms. McKinnis mentioned, and the next meeting will be in the city of Downey. That completes my comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Coops?
I'm glad for the participation, I'm especially glad that our captain from Lakewood Sheriff was able to come in and give us some direction as to what he's gonna be doing in the future with our parks, and I'm glad that, that we're gonna reexamine our safety in the parks, that this brought it to a, a discussion point, that we need to, to do more as we have more involvement with the parks. That's all I have.
Great. Councilmember Snoblicker, you got any comments?
Well, I agree.
Okay.
I agree with what he said.
Oh, yeah.
I agree with most everything that was said here tonight. I disagree with a lot of it. So just so you know, I disagree with a lot of it. It goes on and on and on. So, I just want you to know, I disagree with a lot of it. Thank you. Thank you.
The mayor pro tem, Sonny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been getting a lot of inquiries lately about the, about steel crap, so, Mr. Delonge, can you, I think it's a good time to give us a, a brief update of what's going on, and so that it will answer a lot of questions being asked of me.
Sure. Steel crap, as, as you can see, is, is under construction, they're working on the utilities, the underground utilities currently. They have indicated to me that they hope to start bringing on the containers at the end of this week or sometime next week, and then the serious tenant improvements will be done to the interiors of those as they hook them up to the utilities. They are currently being cut, the, the doors and windows and, and some of the other tenant improvements to the containers are being done at the location behind the J.C. Penney Building down on Bellflower Boulevard. They're still anticipating to try and get done by December or January. That is their timeframe.
Wow, that's pretty aggressive.
Okay, not in time for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. All right, thank you.
Depends on which year.
Ouch.
Which Christmas.
May I have a tree lighting this year?
Naturally, yeah, of course.
I'm trying.
With that, I'd like to apologize for some of the harsh comments from the, from the dais tonight, and with that said, I apologize, and, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We adjourn.